Good evening. I call to order tonight's meeting of the Planning Commissioner of City of San Clemente. Today is Wednesday, November 2nd. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Camp.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Camp.
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove.
Here.
And Chairman McCann.
Here. Thank you. There are no special orders of business. Next item is the minutes from previous meeting.
And make a motion to approve.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Prescott Lefler and a second from McCacken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay. Any opposed? No. And any abstains, abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, so Camp and Cosgrove abstain. Oral Communications. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? Mayor James, you have three minutes.
You know, I come here to apologize to this group. You did a lot of great work as it related to the Memorial Care Project. Great work. Repeatedly, you did a lot of great work. Repeatedly, you unanimously had issues with the Memorial Care Project. It comes before, it came before council last night, as I think all of you are aware. And we chose, as a council, to ignore our subject matter experts. I've come here to apologize for that. It was unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable. And what we're going to end up with now, I don't know, 55 feet, 60 feet? Obviously, Memorial Care can do whatever the hell they want to do. And it might come as a surprise to many of you. I got upset last night and told Memorial Care what the hell I thought about them and their TCA lawyers they brought with them last night. But we're going to be stuck with that project, but it's not your fault. And I appreciate the hard work every one of you did on this. And I hope we never repeat that again. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor James. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on anything not on the agenda? Thank you. Moving on. We have no items for the consent calendar. So, public hearings. First item is Cultural Heritage Permit 21-332, Encroachment Permit 22-317, WAC Historic Duplex, 161 West Marquita. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. My name is Christopher Wright, Associate Planner 2. It's green. Yeah. Project Planner on this item. This is a request for a cultural heritage permit and an encroachment permit. And this is the site's at 161 West Marquita, at the corner of Caya Puente and West Marquita. The site has a historic duplex on the city's list of historic structures. It was located, relocated to the site in 1959. The single-family residence was put on a nonoriginal foundation as part of that. And nonoriginal stairs leading to the duplex unit were added to provide access at the time. These are photos of the building prior to some work that was completed. The city had issued a staff waiver at a staff level to do some rehabilitation improvements to the site. In the process of doing that work, the contractor had noticed that there was dry rot in some of the framing members, and some work was done without permits. So, since then, the applicant has been working with city staff to get proper approvals for this. In addition to working with Coastal Commission, they have an active application with them that they're doing concurrently with this. So, the site looks quite different now. They removed the landscaping and the framing members are exposed on the duplex unit. You could see on the bottom right of the slide. And the project would do a number of things to upgrade the status of the building, the condition of the building. So, actually, I think I skipped, go to this one first. So, on the left top of the slide is the single-family residence. Most of the work has already been completed to that building because there's some minor changes that would be made in addition to what's been done. But most of the work has already been permitted under that staff waiver. But I show it in the slide just so you can compare. And then, the bottom of the slide shows that there would be a patio with a retaining wall down to cover that nonoriginal foundation. That would go into the public right of way, so they need an encroachment permit for that. The stairway leading to the duplex, you know, above the garage would be widened to provide a code-compliant current stairway to that duplex unit. Currently, it's too narrow and just doesn't meet building and safety requirements. So, that's a change that we're making. Also, in addition, below that stairway would connect the building, so they need a cultural heritage permit to get an exemption from the nonconforming ornats. Staff supports that because it encloses the area where you can't see it. So, it maintains the footprint of the buildings in a place that you can't see from the street. There's a number of changes that would be made just to repair the site. So, wherever original components of the buildings could be saved, they'll be doing that according to the Secretary of Interior Standards. There's some alterations that they would be making to actually restore original features, like the window design on the duplex unit at the second level. That also, there's site landscaping and hardscaping work that they're doing, including like restoring the condition of the coastal canyon vegetation. So, overall, I'm going to go to this. Overall, staff supports this project. The applicant has provided a historic analysis report that goes into depth of how this project is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards, overall improves the condition of the property, condition of the neighborhood, and with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Okay. We will, seeing none, I'll open up, oh, I have a question. Did this went to DRC, correct?
It did.
Okay, thank you. And did they have any changes relative to that process?
There are no changes. The Designer Research Committee was in support of the application as proposed.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, I'll open up the pub, oh, sure.
I want to let the applicant have the opportunity to choose to speak.
Sure. Would the applicant like to speak on the project?
I'm down.
Okay. Come on up. You have three minutes from when you begin, and then afterward, if you wouldn't mind filling out a blue speaker card for the secretary. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for having me. I've never really done this before, so good to see all of you guys and go through this whole experience. It's awesome. And thanks for your time on it. We started this project, I would say our permits were issued like early May, and thankfully, we were able to do some of it, and some of it we ran into issues on, on the garage side. Basically, behind the walls, it was pretty rotted out, and we figured that it needed to be rebuilt and kind of did an emergency effort to fix it. Thankfully, it's safe now, and it's a pretty rad property, and it's worth saving. I think a lot of people would look at it as nearly a teardown, and to us, we wanted to kind of preserve it and restore it. I've driven by this place hundreds of times and always thought it had a lot of potential, and it kind of came to me by way of just manifesting it. And I eventually bought it from the owner, and he's since been back there and seen what we've done and really thought it was pretty awesome as well. And so, we're really looking forward to putting it back together and buttoning it up. It's been kind of sitting half-finished, and we're excited to finish it and add like a really nice addition to that part of town. And it'll be all nicely landscaped and nice walls, and you can kind of see what we've done in the front house and the direction that's going. That's already really nice, but the other portion of it is just sitting there, ready to go, and we're ready to put it back together and make it really nice. So, thank you guys for the opportunity, and thanks for letting me speak on it, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would, I'd like to open the public hearing. Sir, I see a hand. You'll come on up and speak. You have three minutes. Please fill out a blue speaker card afterwards.
Sure thing. I'm Shane Hirschman. I'm actually running for city council as well, but I happen to live across the street from this building. So, I've seen it and seen Christian's work, and I trust no one better than him to kind of do it. He has a great portfolio of properties that he represents, and I think he's going to do a really great job with it, so I fully support it. One thing to bear in mind, though, there is a creek there, and there's like a family of hawks, so just be mindful of the hawks when you're building. And it might not be a bad idea to put an owl, barn owl box up there, because there's actually a lot of rats that, like, in that creek area. So, that would be kind of a natural way of controlling that. But aside from that, I think he's going to do a great job with it. So, I just came here to support it as a neighbor, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschman.
Thank you.
Don't forget to fill out a speaker card, please. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this project? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Hold it.
Go ahead.
I don't see anybody jumping in, but we reviewed this previously, and Christopher Wright did a very good job on evaluating this project and putting together the presentation on it. And we've had another property that we've reviewed with this applicant, and it's obvious that he's in favor of our interest in maintaining our historic buildings in town, and we appreciate that very much. And I can certainly make all the findings that Christopher's put in the report, and I am certainly in support of it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this project? I'll jump in. I, too, appreciate your, you know, interest and authenticity in bringing back the authenticity of the architecture and the character of the property for the benefit of all of the community. So, thank you for doing that. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman. I'll go ahead and move staff recommendations that, number one, the project is categorically exempt from sequel requirements and that we adopt resolution PC 22-024 approving the heritage, cultural heritage permit, H, CHP 21-332, and the encroachment permit 22-317, a WAC duplex, subject to the attached conditions of approval on the resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's 7-0. Thank you. Okay, moving on. The next public hearing is, and for the record, we'll note that Cecilia joined us. Welcome. Next public hearing, specific plan amendment SPA 21-229, specific plan amendments for Forrester Ranch, Marblehead Coastal, Marblehead Inland, Ranch of San Clemente, and Talega. Do we have a staff report?
The staff planner is Kyle Weber, and he will begin his presentation shortly. Additionally, oh, thank you. Additionally, staff has had an in-person planning commission debriefing for the majority of the planning commissioners since the last study session to inform the commissioners on the proposed amendments and how staff will be presenting the changes. So, as noted in the staff report for this item, staff did again modify the proposed amendments for the Ranch of San Clemente and Talega specific plans since the most recent study session in order to address two concerns raised by the commissioners. First, the definitions for major and minor repair services were modified to consider most auto repair uses as minor repair, while we redefine major auto repair uses to include only those establishments that handle hazard waste materials and thus requiring specific permits for such establishments that would then allow the city to review those projects with discretion through the requirements of a conditional use permit. And secondly, staff updated provisions related to the screening of vehicle display services and equipment to require screening from the public right of way in any residential zones within 1,000 feet of the property where an auto service use is located. This was changed to address the concern raised by the planning commission that screening from any residential zone may prove to be too difficult or impossible, given the varying topography of the business in industrial park districts. So, with that, considering the material presented in the staff report and the attachments to the staff report, staff is recommending the planning commission adopt resolution PC 21-019, recommending the city council approve specific plan amendment 21-229 as presented in the draft city council resolution, provided as exhibit six of the planning commission resolution. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Commissioner Davis?
So, I was kind of reading through everything, and when we talk about, I would like to, well, let me ask you this. When we talk about major vehicle repair and minor vehicle repair, and major is anything that would generate, treat, store, dispose of hazardous waste, but minor, we could have shops that do lubrication services and that kind of thing. What's the difference?
So, the difference is...
Is there quantity or something?
The goal is to not preclude certain, certain auto uses that would, that would be repairing vehicles that would be possibly considered using or handling, treating hazardous waste. And we want, we want them to go under a certain discretionary process for, at least our engineering division to review in order to see if we're having any environmental impacts. And so, but there was a planning commissioner during the study session that mentioned there are some uses, such as detailing, that may involve paint, that we wouldn't want to require having conditional use permit if the goal is to encourage relocation of some uses to that area.
So, like, can you talk about what the hazardous waste materials as defined by the California Health and Safety Code might be? Would that include oil?
You know, I actually can't talk about that specifically, but we do have it identified.
Commissioner Davis, if I could jump in. The way that this section of the specific plan is written is intended to identify a class of minor repair services that are expressly identified. Since many automotive processes, services include some, they tend to include some type of materials that need to be treated, you know, after the end of the service, meaning you can't just throw them away, and you can't wash them down the storm drain. There's a minor class that's identified expressly, and then the major repair would be basically anything else that you can do to a vehicle that involves hazardous materials, which would be things that the state would regulate related to particulate matter, especially coming from products with like VOCs, volatile organic chemicals, oils, coolant, things of that nature. The way that this is written is essentially, everything could potentially qualify if we only had a definition for major. But since we have a definition for minor that identifies specific smaller types of services, then the only things that are really left in the major would be like, like major overhauls of engines, you know... of engines, you know, large chassis work, those kinds of things.
Right.
If I could weigh in on page four, definitions and track changes. You have major vehicle repair and also minor vehicle repair. And the minor vehicle repair, which is basically out of the public site, would be the oil and lubrication services that you're looking at, or you were looking for?
Yeah, it's more specified under the minor and major. It's just kind of, it's pretty vague on, on the major. It's just, there's another place in here in exhibit one that talks about major might come over that. It says heavy automobile maintenance, such as engine overhauls, auto painting. So that's specified deeper in there a little bit more, and but in the front, it's not specified. So I was wondering, should we, should we specify more? That's just kind of my question. Do you need to give examples of what major is? If it's not under minor, everything else is major?
I think that's mostly the intent of the definition. If we can't fit it under minor, we want to be able to review it if it's something that we're not accustomed to reviewing.
Thank you. Commissioner Crandall, do you have a question? Anyone else? I have a question. Kyle, how would this apply to, you're going to have users that potentially service their own fleet, right? So it's not, it's not for, you know, retail repair, but, but kind of internal repair. Are these applicable the exact same way, independent of who the repairs are?
So we, let's see. So we do have options for certain dealerships or sales or rentals of vehicles to include a minor vehicle repair service on site. But if an establishment was to, an establishment that wasn't a dealership or in the, in the realm of selling vehicles, if they wanted to include minor vehicle repair on site, that would be a, a separate, that would be a separate business or establishment of an existing one. And we don't really have an exil, yeah.
Yeah, if I could just jump in, the short answer is unless there is like, unless there's a business type where the code would allow for an ancillary repair facility as part of a different type of business, essentially the, the code, the specific plans do not provide for fleet repair as, as part of an existing business. So they would, they would have to be classified as something within the code. And, and unless there's some type of exemption for that as an ancillary use, which is not included in, in our specific plans, there, there would be no exemption for that.
Okay, so they, so if it was internal fleet repair, whatever, they would still have to do it where it was allowed per the, per these definitions and per the specific plans?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have another question regarding the screening on item two on page four. It would talk to, but now, now it's kind of, it shortened it from any ability to see, to see something from a public right of way to not visible from a public right of way or residential uses within 1,000 feet of the establishment. How did that 1,000 feet come up? I mean, to me, 1,000 feet is still kind of enormously far. I mean, that's like 10 football fields, you know.
Yeah, the planners...
Doesn't seem to me like it needs to be that far, and that potentially creates problems.
We looked at the site, and first we started low, 250, 500 feet. And as we were looking around the certain lots that could have an automobile use, it seemed that there, we still wanted to keep it at least not visible from certain residential properties that are within the specific plan area. And they do tend to abut, the residential zones tend to abut some of the parcels that may have auto uses on them. And so 1,000 feet was, was allowing it to, to give us some leeway to make it not so, it had to be from any residential lot, but still keep it a cer, a certain standard in there that would allow more residential, or allow more auto uses in the area. We think if you were to lower it, it may have the potential to cause a nuisance to some residential properties. So there was a group of us that kind of looked at it and decided that 1,000 was at least a conservative way to protect residential zones from visual nuisance.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item? Mal, if we don't have any people to speak, do we open and close the public hearing? Okay, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone change your mind? No? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for commission discussion.
Yeah, I've got one question, or, and I don't have an answer for it, and I don't expect to get one this evening. But in other jurisdictions I've seen, when they have something like this, they will identify a quantity of hazardous material, like less than 10 gallons. So they aren't moving around 50 gallons of drums of carburetor cleaner or anything that if it does fall off a forklift and spills is a big issue. And if you could research that and see what other jurisdictions have come in with, or maybe engineering or somebody knows that, because for trapping hazardous materials, if there's a spill, it's a lot easier if you just drop a, you know, gallon can of carburetor cleaner versus tipping over a 50 gallon drum. So that may be a way to help define the two, what's major, what's minor.
Yeah. I didn't come across any of that in my own research, and it's possible that the Public Works Department has something that they, a standard that they review projects on.
Because then engineering will say, you know, you got to have a curb around your work area to contain it if there is a spill, and it's got to go into some kind of a entrapment and be able to be pumped back out, so.
Commissioner Crandall, if I could speak on that?
Yeah.
The, the Code Compliance Division has, takes care of the city's water quality enforcement. And I can tell you that those types of differentiations are, are, when we're talking about source material entering a storm drain are, don't, don't necessarily help between what is a major and what is a, a minor violation. Literally anything that has the potential to affect a storm drain is something that not only does the city, are we concerned about it because it, it goes through, goes to our beaches, but the Metropolitan Water District and the South Coast Water Quality District, there, we, we have permits that require us to maintain enforcement related to storm, storm water quality. And so any, any use that has a potential to, to affect that, dealing with any amount of, of chemicals, the city really has a, has a, has an interest in making sure that we're able to effectively regulate those. And so we would, we would prefer that we are not putting certain classes that only deal with a, you know, a small amount of, of matter into a special category when they potentially have the same, same capacity to affect our water quality standards as one with more material. It, it doesn't take a lot to, to affect our, our storm drains. However, if, if what you're asking is for us to, for staff to look into this, should, should this move forward? If, if you'd like staff to look into this, to provide this information to the council for their consideration, staff would, is more than willing to do that. But the simple answer is we're trying to parse out differences in volumes of hazardous material. It can get a little bit, can get a little bit burdensome when, at the end of the day, it's, you either have it or you don't, and, and this, the same regulations tend to apply.
I think Commissioner Crandall makes an excellent point. If we were to move this along, could we move it along with our recommendations with a specific quantity? Or to clarify if there is a specific quantity of hazardous materials?
Absolutely.
Could that be part of like an amendment to it?
Absolutely.
Maybe there, a good resource would maybe be fire compliance. Out as far as flammable surface area and that kind of thing. Quantity wise, maybe if you could line that up with a similar 30 gallons, whatever they say. If you line that up, compliance would be aligned with that too, you know.
In the normal building permit process, isn't that kind of captured? Because they're going to ask what uses, you know, what are you going to do here? What are you going to do on this piece of property? And usually in most codes, you know, you, if you're going to discharge into the sewer system anything, you got to get a permit.
Stormwater.
If you're, if you're a commercial industrial use. So it doesn't matter if it's a gallon, you still have to be able to explain how you're going to contain it. That's also kind of like state regulation from my past experience also.
Yes, that, that is, that's our understanding as well. The Orange County Fire Authority does review the city's building license applications. There are some uses that are by right, that may have hazardous material, not auto-related. But the Orange County Fire Authority will review the business licenses, which, which in some instances may be the only permit from the city that's required for a new business to, to operate. And so they'll review those, and if they see a type of business that has hazardous material, flammable materials, then they will, they'll, they'll contact the business owner to ensure that they're providing the, the right kinds of, of, those yellow boxes that, to protect those types of materials from combusting, should there be a fire.
Because in LA County, they'll actually issue a non-discharge permit, which means you're getting this permit that says you can't discharge. So it's pretty clear that, you know, you're issued a permit that allows you not to do it. If they see that you have a certain chemical that's on the list that you use in either your commercial or residence property, I mean, commercial or industrial property. Okay. My only thing is, since we brought up number two screening, that should be within 1,000 feet, right? Not with 1,000 feet, just to make sure that the grammar is...
That's accurate, yes.
Good catch.
Yeah, and I want to make sure, and I think Adam can address this one, because he's been code enforcement, that yes, it's looked at during the permitting phase, but during the operational phase, things change and evolve. And people start doing things that maybe the, when it went through plan check, weren't done. And is that a different, is, would that be just a, would it be part of this ordinance? Or would it be enforcing the state water quality management? I don't know the answer to that.
So a lot of our code related to storm water quality reflects the state codes on that. I, I can tell you with, when we're dealing with a project that has gone through a discretionary permit process, our code provides for enforcement of, of businesses or, or operations that are operating out of compliance with a city issued approval or permit. And so those projects where we have conditions of approval, the violation of a condition of approval is something that we can enforce against as well. And so on those types of projects where there's a high likelihood that there could be contamination-related issues, we, we would build that into the conditions of approval to ensure that those are not likely to be met. And should they occur, we have enforcement capability to enforce the provisions of our permits.
And which department would put that into the conditions of approval? Engineering or planning, or which?
The utilities department would, would typically deal with issues that could affect the storm drains or the sewer system, and also waste disposal.
I just see when I was on the coastal committee for those three or four years, and that committee doesn't exist anymore, the, I think it was Public Works, or like you said, the utilities department, actually, they would be reactive. Because there were quite a few complaints every month on either discharges into the sidewalks or curbs, or whether it was residential, industrial, or commercial. But there also was some proactivity on, especially like the industrial areas that there would be, because I noticed there would be some citations on just proactive visits where people weren't handling their chemicals correctly. Some was done internally, but some was also done by Orange County Fire Department in their spare time.
So for clarification, Commissioner Crandall, would this be, would you be comfortable with this falling under storm water management, or is it still back at the quantity of hazardous materials? If we were to make a recommendation?
I'm comfortable if they just review it and visit it again, just to make sure that whether it needs to be in here or not, because I don't know the quantities it would be or action against it. I didn't anticipate that, so I didn't do research on what the other jurisdictions are doing. Direction to revisit that issue and make comment.
Can a recommendation? Staff would be comfortable with a, as part of any recommendation, that staff investigate the, the, the volume of hazardous material issue with the appropriate city departments and partner agencies, and provide additional information on opportunities to address that as part of this specific plan amendment, these specific plan amendments to present to council as part of the planning commission's recommendation.
I would be comfortable with that.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? I, go ahead, Commissioner Cosby.
No, I was just trying to summarize what I think we're doing here. Those, because there's quite a few different moving parts, right? And we're focused on some of the detail. But I think if we zoom out, a lot of this is just to bring our general plan and our coastal land use plan, make them consistent so that when we go to the coastal commission with our local coastal program, everything lines up. So a lot of this is, is make, is consistency in making everything line up, and all the specific plans match the general plan. So that's what a lot of this is doing. And I think that's just important to point out that the staff is making good progress towards our LCP, which is really important. And so I wanted to just acknowledge that this is a good, good step. The other thing too is just as with anything, once it's opened up, you know, there's some things that the staff has tried to incorporate with that. Some of it is to incentivize the operations of automotive dealerships and so forth to perhaps relocate to the business park. And I, I appreciate that. I think it's a challenge if you're on, if you're on El Camino, that's a lot of, I, that's a lot of high traffic, and you probably want to stay there. But to the degree that I think we keep the barrier low for them to relocate is a good thing. And I was the one that spoke to that last time. You know, we want to encourage them to move off of El Camino and go into the business park. So we want to make sure that we're encouraging that. And I also want to recognize and appreciate the fact that I asked for delivery centers to be added, and that I see that's added. So like if we had a, like Tesla wanted to do a delivery center in San Clemente where people could just come and pick up their car, we would permit that. That would be, that would be allowed. And so that was included. So I think that's, a lot of work has gone into this, and I mean, I think the comments are helpful, but I also wanted to point out just in general what I think we're trying to do here tonight. That's just my comment.
Thank you.
I would be willing to wait, make a motion with the recommendation to staff.
Can I mention one thing real quick?
You can.
And then I'd love to hear your motion. My two cents, I'm supportive. I think, I think a lot's gone into this, and I think it's, a lot has gone into it. I think, I think a lot's gone into this and I think it's, a lot has gone into it. That's understating it. And I think it's really good. My personal opinion is that the thousand feet requirement for screening is farther than it needs to be. I'm not, you know, going to make a big fuss or anything if people don't agree. But if there was agreement, I, I would be happy to see that be recommended shorter. But with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
What's your recommendation?
Five hundred sounds good to me. I mean, that's.
Well, let me chime in on that. We, you talked about that, you know, it's three and a half football fields.
You're right, I was wrong. Yeah, it's, yeah. No, you're right, you're right. I was thinking about that after a while and messed up.
Just so you, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're three and a half football fields away from somebody's window or backyard, you know? So I think it's a great perspective. If you do five hundred feet, that's one and a half football fields, right? So that's a great way for us to look at that.
Yeah, this seems arbitrary. Five hundred, I mean, they put some time into looking at properties, it sounds like, and came up with that as a, as a number that's been researched. So just arbitrarily reduce it. You know, I think it should be based on something.
Okay.
Commissioners, if I could just remind everybody to turn on their microphones when they're speaking. Their green light is on, then they're on. If their red light is on, then they're off.
No, and I, and I appreciate that comment. My, but I heard, I thought I heard was that the thousand feet was basically a collection of their thoughts and ideas. It wasn't based on some hard standard, but, but their opinion.
There, yeah, there was no data involved with coming up with a thousand feet. It was a conservative inclusion into the, the standard, the policy. So I think if you wanted to lower it even somewhere between five hundred and a thousand, that's not going to cause any issues. Yeah, again, there wasn't any detailed data to go along with that, the thousand feet, but.
Well, I'm disappointed.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't arbitrary. We did look at it and we wanted, we wanted to come up with something that would at least protect the residential zones in the area. And we knew that that would, so.
So if we wanted to change, change it to say two football field lengths away, would that be an appropriate unit of measure?
I'd have to look at the map again.
Kyle will do the research to figure out what the, that distance is.
Or two soccer pitches? Or eighteen basketball courts or?
Kyle, is this anywhere near or would it also bring in mixed use properties where, you know, there is a resident and it may be on the top or the bottom of commercial use? And a thousand would be just way too far away for a business?
Yeah, so the policy is written from residential, residentially zoned properties.
So not mixed use?
It would not include mixed use.
Okay, that makes me feel more comfortable then.
Also, in the specific plans, there is not going to be a situation where that would occur. And I will just say that we, we were looking at the visual impacts here and the visual impacts of storing, you know, a large amount of, of vehicles. So the, the thousand feet would, would essentially provide an adequate distance from which something like this could be visible. But that, that, that's the baseline that we were operating under. So staff would support whatever the planning commission deems appropriate.
But we're talking about in the back, presumably in the back of commercial properties, probably tilt up properties that are twenty to twenty-five feet tall. You're looking at that, you see that. Now what we're really talking about is what's stored at the ground level, probably behind a fence. Right? Whether that's a number of cars or a couple lifts or something like that.
Potentially, that, that would, that would most likely be the likely scenario. However, in staff's research and in communications with, with potential applicants on this type of project, we've, we've identified that some properties may opt to construct a building with a rooftop parking area, which would have a different type of visual impact for residential. You know, it's, it might be one thing to look at the top of a building, but it might be another thing to effectively see, look at a sea of vehicles. That was, those are the, those are the, the aspects of a potential project that we were, we were looking at.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yeah, Adam, right now in the industrial zones and business parks, we've got plumbing supply houses and whatnot with storage yards behind the buildings. And maybe the fences are eight foot. I don't know what the actual height is. That would be visible and are currently visible. Is there a restriction for them? I'm not sure a car is less objectionable than, a car is probably less exit, has less impact than those yards where they've got debris and supplies and stacks of materials and all. Are we treating these differently than the other businesses?
Well, outdoor material storage areas are required to be screened from any view from a public right of way. Knowing that and, and knowing the business park, there, there may be some properties that are not compliant with that. However, businesses are required to maintain their operations within an enclosed structure. And there are exemptions from that if they screen their equipment, their storage areas. And, and again, that is to protect public views. We were looking at, we're looking at incentivizing new uses. And while we want to encourage those uses and, and create those low barriers, we also want to anticipate potential projects that could, could be somewhat impactful and, and, and identify the necessary regulations to ensure that, you know, neighborhoods are not adversely impacted by, by land uses, which are not really currently encouraged or, or permitted in the business park area. That's, that's our, that's where staff's coming from on, on this type of, of, of project.
You know, my comment here would be is since it already says all of those potential uses cannot be visible from the public right of way, that's probably the most restrictive in most situations. But if you had a place like if Amazon came with their distribution center and if across the little ravine was a, which there is a housing, you know, project across, the thousand feet may give them protection from just looking at a whole bunch of trucks, you know, parked in a parking lot where before they had a hill. So that's one thing to kind of, you know, think about. So, because I really don't have a problem with a thousand, because it already can't be visible from the public view. So that means all along Pico or wherever they, it just cannot be visible.
I, I don't, I think we probably discussed it enough. I was going to say, suggest, why don't we take a straw poll and see what people think? And then whoever wants to make a motion can make a motion based on, oh, go ahead.
You want to go shoot first?
Is this line of sight from at the same elevation? Or if you're up on a ridge looking down on this thing, you're not going to be able to screen it with a fence or anything. And there probably are line of sights that are elevated, looking down on things that are within a thousand, or within five hundred feet, but certainly within a thousand. So is that considered?
The topography does, yeah, the topography is, is factored in here. That's, I will say that the, the business parks were, were designed in a way. I don't want to say they were, they were, it was like the hillside preservation ordinance, but they were designed in a way to, to not stick out, to not stick out amongst the various topographical areas that are at a higher elevation. And they're, and they're, and the way the landscaping occurs around the perimeters, they're, they're generally screened from lower elevations. Most of the time when we were, when staff was talking about this issue, we were, we were considering the possibility that we're talking about something, somebody looking down on the business park. That doesn't mean that it, it's not possible to locate in these areas. What we're talking about is that they adequately screen those areas. And that can be done in a number of ways. And the business parks already have a lot of examples of how to, how to screen. Just as I, as I mentioned, when you're, when you're outside of the business park, they're, they're not that easy to see. I mean, it's, it's not until you get into the business park that you really understand how much of a business park there is in these, in these locations.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. So the, the, okay, so just to get my head around it, most of the thousand feet are the, the residents that will be impacted. It's their backyard view where they probably have a wall up anyway?
Most likely that would be the case.
No front yards really?
There are.
Probably not.
I am not aware of any front yards that face directly to the business parks.
The, the, the thing that caught my attention is when we're talking about storage of vehicles on a rooftop, right? Haven't really considered that personally. So when you have a maximum height of a building, right, in the, what, what is the maximum height? Do you know off the top of your head?
Thirty-five feet in the ranches San Clemente Business Park would be.
So would those cars go on top of the thirty-five feet?
No. If they're behind the building and they would be visible, in that case, if they're on top of the building, they would be visible if they were on top of the thirty-five feet. So what we would anticipate most likely would be a, a building that has a parapet wall where their, their view of those cars is blocked from the public right of way. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the view is blocked from a residential property that's in an outlying area. An example could be the Talega Business Park has properties across Avenue de Pico that are at or in some instances above the, the elevation of the business park. And it would just be ensuring that the, the storage of vehicles on those properties doesn't, doesn't create a, a situation where you have residences that appear to be across the street from a car park. Like a, like a, like a car country.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm thinking reflection off windshields and all that kind of stuff. If it's on top and we're there above. And then so that thirty-five feet, does that include that wall? I don't know what you call that wall.
A parapet wall on the top would include it. That would be the, the maximum height to any roof element. There are certain exceptions for things like elevators and, and such. The majority of the building would need to comply.
So then if you got storage up there, what about lighting? You know, these guys like, if, if they're selling cars, they're going to want lights to shine down, make them look pretty.
Potentially, however, the lights would not be able to be over the high limit.
Over that, yeah. And there, there's provisions about protecting the lights and shielding them and this and that. But you're still going to have that constant reflection. So night pollution is important to me too, you know? So I, I don't know if that's on this subject or not. I'm just now thinking about cars being sold on rooftops with lights on them.
Yeah.
Can't say necessarily like that.
Yeah, so the, the individual operators are, are going to need to determine how to, how to show their cars. We wouldn't anticipate, I mean, it could be a possibility, but it, it seems most likely that the delivery centers especially are going to have an area where they're more showing off the cars than on a rooftop deck. But could be a possibility.
Okay.
I'm just going to ask, these, these are all subject to use permits?
Um, you know what?
Or is it by right now?
No, so we've, we've identified auto related uses in, in a, a number of categories. Kyle, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, if you want.
Walks, so, yeah, page forty-four.
Yes, looking for that, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Page forty-four goes over the vehicle rental sales and.
Yeah, I saw, that's why I was concerned, because these things got to have to come back for permit. And we have, that was when you have those specific conversations. Yeah.
I, I'd like to suggest we go around and see what distance people are comfortable putting in there, just kind of as a, not a final vote, but off the record vote, Commissioner Prescott-Lawler?
Off the record, comment, one thousand I'm comfortable with.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann?
Comfortable with a thousand?
Me too.
Six hundred, two football fields?
Those are yards.
I'm comfortable with a thousand.
Thousand?
Yeah.
Thousand.
Okay. So I would suggest whoever wants to make a motion that that could be a guide.
Leave it as it is.
Just leave it as it is.
Yeah. It's just a motion there.
I'm comfortable making with a motion. Before I make the motion, Adam, can you tell me if my staff recommendation wording is correct? Recommend, recommend that staff revisit the issue of the volume of hazard, hazard materials with the appropriate city department and make recommendation. Is that correct? Okay. Then I'll make a motion to adopt staff, staff recommendation, adopt resolution PC twenty-one dash zero-one-nine recommending the city council adopt specific plan amendment twenty-one dash two-two-nine with recommendations that staff revisit the issue of the volume of hazard materials with the appropriate city department and make a recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Were you, were you?
Commissioners, for the record, was that Commissioner Cosgrove that seconded?
Yeah.
Yes, and you were a aye on?
I'm an aye.
Support, okay. Thank you. Item passes seven-zero. Next item, housing element rezoning program, zoning code amendments to be consistent with state housing laws.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Chair McCann and Commissioners. My name is Sarah Toma. I'm the senior planner in the planning division. Today I'll be presenting to you the zoning ordinances implementation of the, can you hear me? A little bit better? Okay, I'm going to present to you the zoning ordinances implementation, this city's six-cycle housing element. So just wanted to give you a little bit of a background. In accordance with state law, the city's six-cycle housing element for the reporting year of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine identifies various programs that the city will pursue to promote opportunities for new housing for all economic levels and those with special needs. Included among these programs are the six zoning ordinances before you today. And state law and the San Clemente municipal code requires that the planning commission to review and make a recommendation to the city council on the proposed zoning code amendments. And for the next six slides, I'm just going to go through the changes per ordinance and their attachment one through six in the staff report. So for the density bonus and other affordable housing incentives, we're changing the, for, under the purpose, the purpose of this section is to allow density bonuses and other affordable housing incentives to, to qualifying projects in accordance with state law. And item B is density bonus and affordable housing incentives. And the density bonus and other affordable housing incentives requires that the state law, including but not limited to the government code six-five-nine-one-five, shall be available to applicants on the terms and conditions specified in state law. So basically for this ordinance, we're just making sure that what we have in our municipal code matches state law. If an applicant wants to come in, we're consistent, they can apply and we can provide them in accordance to that. And which is consistent with our housing element. For emergency shelter and parking requirements to comply with AB one-three-nine, ordinance that amends the emergency shelter standards by requiring shelters to provide parking at a ratio of not less than one space for every employee in the largest shift. And this is the emergency shelter parking ordinance. For ordinance number three, and this is the accessory dwelling unit and the junior accessory dwelling unit, there are multiple changes here. I'm just going to go through them kind of quickly. I'm just gonna go through them kind of quickly. So it requires the city to allow certain ADUs to be higher, up to eighteen or twenty-five feet, depending on the situation. Requires that the city front setback requirement to yield to certain ADUs. Require the city to justify a denial for a full set of detailed comments describing the deficiencies in the application and explaining how to remedy them. Remove the automatic reappeal of the twenty-twenty-five. Now the ADU statute is permanent. Prohimbid, prohibit the city from denying an application to create an ADU solely because corrections are needed to address non-conforming zoning conditions, building code violations, or unpermitted structures elsewhere on the lot, and do not present a threat to the public health, safety, and are not affected by the construction of an ADU. And in instances where a junior ADU will share a bathroom with the primary dwelling, the city must require the junior ADU to have an interior entry to the primary dwelling, which is the main living area, dependent, depended on the exterior entrances of the junior ADU in the primary dwelling. For ordinance number four, the low-barrier navigation center. So low barrier means incorporating best practices to reduce barriers to entry and may include, but not limited to, the following. The presence of partners, the presence of partners, if it's not a popul- a population-specified site such as for survivors of domestic violence or sexual assault, women or youth, to have pets, storage of possessions, privacy such as partitions around, around beds in a dormitory setting, or in a larger room containing more than two beds, or private rooms. And under ordinance number five, this is for supportive and transitional housing. Updates the zoning ordinance definition for supportive housing and transitional housing to match how these terms are identified in state law. And specify that supportive housing and transitional housing are considered residential uses of the property and subject to those restrictions that apply to other residential dwellings of the same type and the same zone. And clarifies that supportive housing is a use by right in all zones where multifamily and mixed uses are permitted. And ordinance number six, which is the last one, is a residential care facility. So state-licensed facilities will be required to obtain administrative operating license that will be subject to a streamlined administrative review to be contained in Title V under our business license and regulations. And when required by state or federal law, facility, facilities serving six or fewer are exempt, are exempt from and considered a residential use of the property and a single family for the purposes of Title XV, which is our zoning code. And for sequoia determination, the zoning amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as stated in the staff report and in the resolution. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolutions provided in attachment one through six, which one determines the project exempt from sequoia, and recommends that the city council adopt the density bonus, emergency shelter parking, accessory dwelling unit, low-barrier navigation center, supportive and transitional housing, and the residential care facilities ordinances respectively. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Sarah?
I may have just a comment that it does appear that Sacramento has taken a lot of the local control away from us.
Yes, sadly. Sarah, I have a question. Can you please explain, I don't know, maybe in different words, or maybe a little slower or something, about low barrier? What, what is that more? I didn't quite understand what, what low barrier is intended to cover.
A low barrier, a navigation center is a, is a type of transitional housing where, where people will enter a, a shelter type of situation and then basically find their way to another housing situation. Low barriers are intended to provide access to those types of facilities in a way that's not as, as, as least restrictive as possible.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Anyone else with any questions? I'd now like to open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'd now like to close the public hearing. Open it for Commissioner discussion.
I've got a quick question. I'll know your name.
Microphone.
I've got a quick question. I know yours.
Oh, yeah, I can talk on the mic. My name's Ryan Steger. I'm with the city attorney's office, and I helped staff prepare this, this package of ordinances. So Mal and I spoke beforehand, and I offered to, to slide into this seat when the commission considered this item.
Okay. Just to, I'm just learning, right? Just learning everything here. Is it kinda in light to what's happening with affirmative action, right? How that there, a lot of talk about affirmative action being turned over or lessened or whatever in a lot of colleges, right? So my question is, that's like a state or federal law, right? So if, if, if the state law requires something, do we need to, as a city, change our municipal code to align? Because what I'm, I'm curious about is, say the state changes or lessens their requirements, and then all of a sudden our city has a municipal code that we, ordinance that we have that is now stronger than the state's requirement. And then we have to go through this whole process to unturn what we're doing today. Is it required that we change our ordinances to align with the states?
It's, it's a great question. For a number of these ordinances, for the exact reason that you identified, they incorporate state law by reference. So for instance, the density bonus one, it cites, you know, chapter and verse two, the density bonus statute. So the state routinely updates it, sometimes multiple times a year. And instead of, you know, in the old times, then everyone would have to go back and keep doing it. But by incorporating it by reference, if and when the legislature changes it, it gets changed. If they repeal it, it gets repealed in the code. Same with the supportive housing and the transitional housing ones. They're specifically citing to the state statutes. For, for like the, the ADU, it really is important for cities desiring to exercise as much local control as possible, to have ordinances that are, that are up to date with the state ADU law. Otherwise, you're kind of left to operate under the state's default settings, which, you know, don't go as far as the, the law allows cities to go. So it is, it is situational, but where possible, and for the exact reasons you mentioned, the, the consensus is and the trend among cities is to incorporate a lot of these state law by reference into the codes. So then folks aren't playing catch-up, you know, on an annual basis.
Commissioner Davies, if I may, Cecilia Guado-Daly, community development director. The, the initiation or the genesis of all of these code changes coming before you is our housing element. The city actually recently received certification of its housing element from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And there are programs in that housing element that say that the city will comply with state law in all of these different areas. And I think it is a little bit of safeguarding on the part of HCD to make sure that jurisdictions are mindful and implementing state law the way they should. So it's a reminder for us to do what we can at the local level to satisfy the requirements of the state.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a off-color comment. I, I just find it extremely hypocritical that our state government routinely defies our federal government and their laws routinely, and yet they mandate that we must follow theirs. I don't know, but I sure wish there was a way we could not follow theirs in the same fashion that they don't follow the federal laws. But my understanding is the consequences are, if we do not do this, they will revoke our permitting ability. Is that right?
Yeah, there, there, there are consequences for the housing element, and then there's also consequences, you know, on an ordinance-by-ordinance basis, depending on the subject matter and, and the scenario with whether it's an applicant or, or someone, if, yeah, if the, if the city isn't compliant with state law, there, there are consequences that, that would, that would follow.
So I don't think anybody wants to do these. It's just, it, it literally is being forced down our throats. So, and there's no way we can, and I know the incorporation by reference, because I, I looked at every one of these to make sure I, the government code was actually cited, not just, not just the bill. And so, and I saw that you did that. And so that, that's how I, that's how I figured this is, but there's no, yeah, and, and when I read some of the government code, it all starts out with, local municipalities will do the following. And it's, and they also have boundary limits that you cannot do and runs around it. I mean, they've thought about this pretty clearly, and they lim, they explicitly prohibit us from saying something on the bonus density, from say, putting, let's say, a minimum in. They've defined all that in the government code. So all we are, all we're left to do is just be subject to it. So I think that's just important for the, for the record to reflect that we're, we're simply doing what we're told.
And I think we ran into the issue with the memorial care, with the bonus density, that it was not updated in our, in our own code, so we didn't have the update in our packet, though I think we were all pretty well-versed in the, the new law, the bonus density. So yes, it is, it all, it is all being forced.
I think how you change it is, you have to change the balance of power in Sacramento.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there are certain, there are certain assembly people, but there are some city organizations that are thinking about litigation, especially when the ADU came around, but we'll see where that goes. But I think it's important that our housing element has been approved, because if you read, I don't know how many, get the LA Times, but there was a big article on what's happening in Santa Monica, that there, because Santa Monica does not have an approved, I don't know if they're against it or what's going on in Santa Monica, but they don't have an approved housing elements or, or it's to the state. And there's one developer who's got four projects, and he could build over, I think it's twenty-three-hundred apartment units by right, because they don't have their.
If they can handle the traffic.
I don't know.
They can't get around. That's health, safety, and welfare.
Well.
Yeah, health and safety is the key.
He can build them, is what the Times said, by state right. So anyways, but the whole game is, you know, superior power, the feds, the state, the county, the city. If the upper agency says, then that's the, but the court could say something different if there is a case to, so we have to approve it.
I wonder if there's value, and I'll ask this of the staff, if we, and maybe you do this already, if we do track the number of times that we are doing approvals of, of these state implement, of these state laws, so that we can say, yes, we've had to approve this many ADUs, we've had to approve this many types of other projects. Do we track that? Is that a metric that we have?
Yes, we, we do track that. One of the things that the State Department of Housing and Community Development requires is that we submit an annual report that identifies how well we're doing with the implementation of our housing element. And it requires reporting related to ADUs, number of dwelling units, residential care facilities, all the, the list of programs in the housing element.
Is there, since the overarching finding we have to make, even in light of these government code regulations, is public safety? Is there value in trying to put some more definition around what we consider public safety? An example, and this is just my personal feeling, and others may disagree. If, and I'm just using the most recent application that we are referencing as an example in my mind, to, you know, in my mind, when the parking was not, was, they wanted an exception, and my feeling was, that's a safety issue. If no one can park, there's no parking alternatives, that's forcing people to park off-site, cross the street, do other things that are, you know, potentially dangerous because there's no available parking. I mean, is there any value if we were to put some more, you know, definitions of, we consider these things health and safety, so that it would be easy for us to, to make findings and say, you know what, that is not, that does not meet our criteria for health and safety, therefore, we're denying this? Is that a potential opportunity for us to at least have some local control using our own standards for what we consider public safety?
Good evening, Jennifer Savage, Assistant to the City Manager. There are some instances that state law actually allows a local jurisdiction to do certain actions such as a, an area parking study to determine that there is, there is an issue and not grant a parking exception. However, that specific example does not apply to all of the mandates by sta, by the state.
Because one of the frustrations I had in our last go-around was, there was a fair amount of ambiguity around what, what we could ask for, what we could do, what, what the state was telling us we had to do. And I think Claire, having more clarity around, you can ask for this, coming from the staff, I think in particular, would be helpful. Because I didn't feel like, I felt a little bit, the challenge to, you know, do my own research and figure out, okay, these were sort of the parameters that I think were being pushed on, this is too far. But it was on my own research, and I don't feel that there was guidance coming to say, these are your options to push back, or to look at how, or this is a framework upon which you can consider some things in the public interest of, of the health and welfare. So I'm just curious if there's things that we can do to try and create our own San Clemente standards for public health and safety that means we don't have to reinvent the wheel every time. Just throwing that out for thoughts. And, and staff, you know, mainly, because it would come from you, so what your thoughts on that are?
Yeah, so short answer, it is sometimes you have the ability to address specific standards related to San Clemente standards. Would the planning commission like the staff in community development to provide a study session on the state density bonus law?
Oh, that's, that's a little bit of a tangent from where I was going. I don't know.
I think we're pretty well-versed in the home, the, I think we, I think we, I think we've been schooled on it already.
Personally, I read it, I don't need.
Personally, I think e, at each application or each situation, I want the options to be presented, I think, to the commission, because there's no way I'm gonna remember everything of your department, everybody's department here. So I, I, I think we're asking for options at time of presentation type.
I, I'm just suggesting, if there, because I'm just looking up to the professional staff here, to say, if you, in your professional judgment, feel that there are a framework that we can incorporate, that's, we can, we can either have as guidelines or codify in terms of our interpretation of public health and safety, that if you feel like that there is a framework we could put together, that then could be drawn upon by commissioners and council members for their reference, so that they're not just out on their own to try and figure it out, with all the various competing interests talking at you, contradicting each other with their interpretation of what you can or cannot do. If there's, if you feel there's merit, I would, you know, like to know that so that maybe we could get that passed up to the council, maybe they could, if they agreed with it, they could maybe give you the direction to spend some time to develop that.
Thank you. We will certainly take that into consideration and come back.
If you think that's worthy, then maybe then that could be just expressed as a planning recom, commission recommendation that, you know, the staff be considered to look into a public health and safety framework for reference in considering any of these, making to make findings on any of these types of situations, if, if, if that makes sense to you all too.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea.
And Commissioners, sorry, I did not mean to interrupt.
But you just did. Did you, did you want to say something?
I did want to speak. I thought you were done.
Okay, go ahead.
This can wait, but I did, I did want to speak to Commissioner Cosgrove, and just let you know that we have a number of city regulatory documents. and just let you know that we have a number of city regulatory documents, uh, beginning with the general plan, that I, that touch on a lot of the topics that you're discussing now. Um, that along with council direction, that along with precedent of the, what the Planning Commission, uh, has reviewed in the past and the direction that they like to go tends to inform staff's, uh, proposal. Um, while there generally are going to be a menu of options, uh, when it comes to these types of laws that the state is, uh, requiring us to, to adopt, the men, the, we will typically bring, uh, a conservative version of those, of the, the most conservative version of that, of that, uh, menu. Uh, and the reason for that is because our general plan really informs what the city desires. And based on that, we will, um, we will, you know, provide a recommendation. Now, there's also, when it comes to these types of laws, there's consultation with our city attorney, because, you know, the liability of the city is something that we need to consider. What I will say is that there are many times where the, the staff will bring a, an actual menu of options for the Planning Commission's consideration, when the direction is not quite so clear. You know, when the, when...
I think that's good. I would like to see that, um, done routinely, because, and I'm not trying to talk negatively about anything, but we have the, our city council is elected by the general public. There's no, um, qualifications other than, you're a resident and of a cer, I can think over 18. So, you don't need to have knowledge of the general plan. You don't need to have planning knowledge. You don't need that. You can get on the city council if you get majority votes. Therefore, it is really incumbent on our professional staff to provide the guide rails for our elected officials to know where they're, where they can go and where they can't go. And to the degree that that is lacking, it's a disservice to the community, because they don't have the background to know, this is what the general plan policies are. And we live it. So, you know, uh, and I look, I look with great respect to, to, you know, Commissioner Crandall, who's been here over 10 years, who has this stuff off top of his head, where I have to, you know, spend weekends, you know, going through the manual and trying to, uh, does this apply? And it sometimes can be an Easter egg hunt to try and figure out, where are these policies? You know, the documents are three, four inches thick and, uh, they're, they're not easily searchable. And so, I really, I feel strongly that our professional staff needs to take that burden of responsibility to have those frameworks for, not just us, but really the council, because they don't always have the background. And their job is complex, they've got a lot of duties, it's, and they don't always have the time necessarily to go in and, you know, like we do, and maybe spend an entire weekend reading, you know, the documents to figure out what, what, what's appropriate and what's not. And I, and I'm just gonna be candid and say, I feel like that's been lacking. Um, and so, to me, this, when I feel, when I read this, come, you know, coming down from the state, and you start to feel that helplessness of lack of control over your own destiny as a community, I find myself looking for opportunities for us to, okay, well, what can we control? And if we can control our general plan and we can control the policies that we, we've adopted, and quite honestly, uh, having sat here now for, I don't know, over a little over a year now, I've come to really respect all those that have served before me, who have taken their time to step up and serve the community and build our general plan document. It is good. There's a lot of stuff in there. And, you know, when, um, I'm out in the community, um, I will run into people who actually served on the general plan committee back in the Centennial Plan days. And they talk affectionately about spending weeks, months, dedicated to, you know, spending hours discussing a paragraph and how important that was. And so, I think it's, we need to make sure that those documents are really respected and that the policies that are stated in there were thought out, they were fought over. And so, we can't, we can't neglect that. I think, and so, it's really incumbent on, on, and I think we did our best to interpret things and bring that to the council's attention. But at the end of the day, when I observe this council meeting, they're looking to our city attorney, they look to staff, what can we do? What does the city policy say? What's, what are the guardrails? And unless it's complete and it's accurate, they're not getting what they need to make the right decision. So, I, I feel like if, to the degree that we should remind the council that, you know, now more than ever, we need to put together the, you know, frameworks for our own benefits, so that we have, for the staff, to present those city policies at the right time. Uh, if that's what you need to do that, to do that homework and get those ready, then let's do it, because I think it's very, very important. So, that's, I'm sorry to get on the soapbox, but...
There's no disagreement, um, with, with that stance at all. I guess what I'm saying is that, for this type of project, if there were a menu of options, the only other options that staff would feel comfortable recommending would be less restrictive, be to, to, uh, provide even more, um, latitude, uh, beyond what the state is, is minimally requiring from the, from, that the cities do.
You know, I think that's very well stated, um, more than I was probably gonna get to. Um, and I think, you know, we had this test case recently, this memorial care project, which I think revealed a lot about the lack of understanding, um, and certainly to the level that it could be conveyed to us about what our options are. So, when you say, you know, we provide the most conservative options, I mean, what does that mean? Is that, it, you know, because this particular project was a complicated one, right? It had a lot of different moving parts. Um, we were, you know, talking about zone change, we're talking about a lot of things that we don't have the authority to approve, but we were asked to make recommendations. And I don't feel like we got the information that we needed to adequately do our jobs here. Um, and this is a word of encouragement. It's not a complaint per se, but I really felt that our hands were tied on this one. And then, you know, it's a good test case, but it's an important one, because it impacts a lot of people in our community. And it could potentially set some precedent. I mean, I know every project stands on its own. Um, but, but I, I think, you know, Commissioner Cosgrove makes some great points about, you know, we've got to, we got to be able to do our jobs here. And I felt like we were getting conflicting information from our staff, um, which, which was frustrating. And I, I don't know if all you guys agree with that, but...
There were some surprises that, that, as we went further along, that I would agree with, that, that we, we didn't have all the information. Um, and at the end of the day, uh, I felt like we went through a lot of time and effort when it was pretty much a done deal. And, you know, with the bonus density and the height limit and, and we argued all those cases under safety, and yet, at the end of the day, the bonus density won. And the safety issues we brought up were, were not of concern going forward.
And, you know, while we're talking about that, just real quickly, even the city council, I believe, was confused.
Confused.
Commissioners, if I, if I could, uh, we're getting a little bit off topic here.
Do the motion then, and we can talk about it at the end, we have comments.
Yes.
Potentially. I'll, I'll let Ryan...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you, you beat me to the punch. Uh, we are agendized this evening and this topic is, is the zoning ordinances, uh, the, the project from the prior meeting is beyond the scope of this agenda item. So, the Brown Act, I think we need to kind of funnel our way back to, uh, the, the item that's currently before the commission.
Thank you, Steph. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution PC 21019, recommending that the city council adopt specific plan 21229 with the...
Oh, sorry, Commissioner, I think we're, um, that was...
Oh, is that the last one?
That was for the, yeah, we're, we're one above.
My pen lost my space. Hold on. That was such a big documentary.
I, that the, I make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt the resolutions provided in attachments 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, which recommend that the city council adopt the density bonus, emergency shelter parking, accessory dwelling unit, low barrier navigation center, center, supportive and transitional housing, and residential care facility ordinances respectively, and make the requisite sequo findings set forth therein.
We have a second?
We've got a second from Crandall.
Crandall, second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm a no.
I'll say I'm a no.
Okay. Item passes 5-2. Thank you. Moving on. New business, no new business, old business, no old business. Reports of Commissioners and staff.
Uh, would you like staff to start or the commission?
Sure. We would love staff to start.
Since we were just discussing the possibility of a study session, um, I, I would like to, uh, put that on our radar. Um, is there a desire, um, to have that done sooner rather than later? We do have some availability in the next couple of months to take care of something like that. Um, what I would like, though, is, um, potentially, and individually, are questions from the Commissioners that they would like staff to address related to, um, uh, potential, um, options presented, um, possibilities, or information about, um, how much our hands are tied, I guess. Uh, if there are specific questions, it'd be nice to get those, be able to put those together. Um, I do want to let, uh, the commission know that we are looking to do a study session at the November 16th meeting related to, um, traffic, uh, transportation engineering from the Public Works Department. Um, so we could do, I believe it would be the December 3rd meeting, uh, potentially on this topic. Um, and I believe that there's a, um, the last meeting of December would be the 20, let me just find it.
I didn't...
Adam, could you be more specific on what the topic is that you're referring to?
For the next, uh, Planning Commission meeting or for this one?
The, the request that's, um, that you're making of the commission on a study session, what is specifically the topic?
The topic would be for, um, the, the issues raised by Commissioner Cosgrove during this meeting related to information provided by staff to the commission for their consideration in making decisions.
I, I could be more specific.
I thought it was where we have, might have flexibility around state, state mandates.
So, that's what I was, I was getting at. There's options, that, you know, what, what do you want to see from staff in terms of options? Sometimes there are no options. And so, I want to make sure that we are, we're providing a study session that provides the information that you're looking for.
Maybe it might be more situational, like when we have something coming through prior to, we could schedule that. And we could have that conversation when it's maybe pertinent versus just kind of out there, FYI. Maybe we could just leave it to your judgment, when you think something's coming through that i- is gonna fit into that kind of cat, category, that's significant, maybe to poll us in advance and say, this is coming, would you like a study session on this particular government code and have a conversation about that? Maybe we could make it based on that.
Okay, so would the commission prefer to have a subject, project-specific or subject-by-subject study sessions related to this? Because this is, this is my concern, is that there were, uh, their concerns were raised by the Planning Commission tonight, that they don't feel that they got as much information as they would like to have had from staff. And our general plan requires, and this is in the government, governance element, that staff provides timely, complete, and accurate information for decision-makers. I want to make sure that we're meeting that mark. So, if there was, if there's anything that the commission would like to, um, know, I, we would like to have a study session where we can discuss that, so that we, so that the commission does not feel that way, um, in the future.
Possibly when a project is going to trigger bonus density, low bearing, all the issues that were raised on the, um, 1 through 6.
So, you'd like a project-by-project?
I think so.
Study session?
I think it would have been...
Not a study session to talk about the information?
It would have been helpful with the last large project that we were looking at, because as we went further on and peeled back the layers of the onion, there were more questions than answers. And, and having a representative from the project stand in front of us did not help me personally. When, when staff's presentation was given, none of my questions were addressed in staff's presentation. It was very generic. And then, as we went further into the project, we, we all had questions, I think.
I'd like to dovetail in on that, just real quick. If we could include somewhere in that group, it's only happened twice, I think, since I've been at the, um, on the Planning Commission, that we've done a project where everything was processed simultaneously. I think two of them. Neither of them went smoothly. I understand why applicants want to have all go through, but I'd like a study session to at least talk about, if we try to process a whole project, that each item in that process be a separate resolution. So, it can be voted on separately, rather than one vote covers absolutely every aspect of that project.
I think that's a, that, that gets at it. I think that's helpful.
In other words, you can look at the zoning, you can look at the general plan amendment, whatever, each one, and each one would require a yea or nay, rather than, and that also helps the applicant knowing where they might be able to improve, rather than having it a little more vague.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And it would be helpful to know if, if that's something that's with, within our, let's say, jurisdiction to even request that, because we didn't seem to have that option, um, on this one. Another thing I might suggest is that, you know, we give ourselves an assignment, um, so we don't come up with it all right now, but over the next week, if we can email a suggestion, a more specific suggestion, and copy everyone and kind of get it like a straw boat, as you like to say.
So, what I would recommend is that you do not send an email to everybody, but send staff an email, and by staff, I mean myself. Um, let's, if you have specific questions about this topic, send them to me. I'll, I'll address them at the next Planning Commission during my reports about what our options are from, from then on. But as I understood it, what we were, what Commissioner Cosgrove was alluding to, um, and what Jennifer Savage discussed, was having a study session to talk about how to provide options, how to provide that information. And the reason I believe that's the case was, um, only because, um, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I was just going from the perspective that the only discretion that it appeared to me we had was public health and safety. That was the only finding we could make. And so, all I was trying to get at is, well, we have so many different elements in our general plan where that's addressed, that it gets to be a, a, an Easter egg hunt to try and locate, well, where are the policies for that when it comes to parking? Um, or where are the elements to that when it comes to, um, uh, with traffic, right? And so, what I was looking for was just maybe an overview of what those policies are, that we could be more versed on it and more comfortable sa, being able to make a, a finding that that is or that isn't. Um, I felt, uh, a struggle, because my common sense was telling me, if it's underparked and nobody can find a park, a place to park, and there's no on-street parking, and all other parking is tow, what are people gonna, that's gonna, to me, that creates a safety issue. So, but what, how do I take that and look at the general plan to make that finding?
And that's a great question. That's the kind of question I'm recommending that you send to me.
Okay. The other thing, I'm sorry, just before I forget, I would like to have a study session. If no one else is interested, I'll come in and do one-on-one, but I'd like to see a demonstration of track it. Once you guys get that system upgraded?
Yes.
I think, I would love, I think it's important for us to understand its capability and see a demo.
And that is on our tentative agenda. Um, it has not gone live yet.
Okay.
So, once it does, uh, I will have staff come in and we'll do a, a demo of track.
I'm thinking there's already a video on it, because we've had that in the past.
I mean, we could show a video, but I, I...
No, I think there's already one that's been done, because we learned a whole track... No, I think there's already one that's been done, because we learned a whole Tracket. We've had that study session.
We're doing a Tracket upgrade that is going to have more opportunities for the public to interface with Tracket and access more data than they currently do, so we'll absolutely do a demonstration.
My, my only comment would be is, when I was a previous planning commissioner in another city, first thing they gave me, even before the meeting, was a municipal code, so that, you know, as you're going through things, you can look up the municipal code regards to traffic, or whatever, and make your own opinion. But I think some of the members up here on the board, you kind of sell yourself a little short, because although they make a resolution, you got the authority to dissect the resolution and separate it if you want. They're making a recommendation, but you have the legislative authority. If we wanted to separate it, we could. I made a determination that traffic and safety, you know, was the first one to say deny. So I think we had more than enough information. We don't want to put it all on them. I mean, they have, they have, they tell us what the code allows. If we don't like it, that's our opinion. If it's strong enough, then we tell them, I don't like it, I'm not going to vote for it. I think that's what happened here, but the council, for whatever reason, and they have the higher authority, superior, and they decided otherwise. And sometimes that happens, but we have the ability, if we, if we don't like it, we can say no. And there've been a lot of times where I've been on the, the no end, but they do, they are a little shackled by what the code allows. And as the state, the state, there is a political, what do you want to call it, force in the state to take away local zoning ordinances. There's no question. R15, that's what we used to call it in Downey, R15,000, I forget what we call it here, but residential medium, residential light, that kind of stuff. There are advocates at the state that don't want that. We're kind of playing into.
So if we could, if I, I just want to not get into a discussion here, but just say, send me your questions, and I'll, I can review them by the next planning commission meeting and provide a, another update at that time.
But we can say no to staff.
That sounds great. Any other comments? I have one, which is, it's great to have everybody here tonight.
Thank you.
You know, I, I'd like to hear more about Santa Monica. That's interesting, whether or not, just by traffic, we could tell the state you can't do it, but that surely was not the report, you know, through the Times. This developer is going to.
So that sounds like a good, a good thing to email them.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, or a motion to continue.
Before we go to a motion to adjourn, if, the, the agenda identifies an adjournment to 6:00 PM, if you could adjourn to the next study session on November 16th at 5:00 PM, here in council chambers.
So are we for sure going to have one, or are you going to?
Yes, there will be one for Public Works Traffic Engineering.
Oh, got it. Sure, I move that we adjourn to the next study session of the planning commission on Wednesday, November 16th at 5:00 PM in City Hall Council Chambers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.